Today is Friday, June 7th, 2024, and I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the City Council. Can you guys take a seat, or that'd be great. Thank you. Okay.
Items one through three are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item three has been submitted and is online under its council file. Items four through eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number seven on the agenda has a typo in the title, and the correct date should be August 31st, 2024.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to recuse myself from item three because my wife's employer has worked with applicants impacted by this item.
Very good. Thank you. We will hold item three on the desk for purposes of recusal.
But we know that we want to continue those activities and developments. So we appreciate your presence here today, appreciate the leadership always of the NAACP, and we want to continue working together, making the One Five great again. Thank you.
Los Angeles Ghostbusters. This is a remarkable occasion and a great honor to be here with all of you. Normally, you would not see Ghostbusters at City Hall unless the city was facing a disaster of biblical proportions. I can, well, we're the best, we're the beautiful, and we're the only Ghostbusters.
Thank you, Miguel. Well, who are you gonna call?
And I have to share, this Ghostbusters Two has one of the all-time great lines of any movie ever made. When Bill Murray says to the ghost who's living in the sewers of New York, "If you had half a brain, you would be living the sweet life out in Southern California's beautiful San Fernando Valley." And with that, I will kick it to the council president from the San Fernando Valley, Paul Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members. And so with that, on behalf of the entire City Council and the mayor of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this resolution to you, Jason, and declare today to be Ghostbusters Day in the city of Los Angeles.
...good of Los Angeles. And so just want to start off this morning, it's following Ghostbuster Day and all the good stuff that is going on here today, which is symbolic of what this job has been. But thank you all for your leadership, your love and your support of this great city of angels. The work you do every day for people you might not ever meet, the impact you have giving great hope to Los Angeles and leading not to make headlines, but to make a difference.
My name is Leon Henke, and I'm speaking for general public comment and in relationship to council file 240656, the ceasefire resolution. I'm a member of the California Faculty Association in Los Angeles, which is also SEIU Local 1983. And we call for a ceasefire, a genuine ceasefire, not just a token one, a ceasefire that can save hundreds of thousands of lives. And we support our brave students camping out in front of the gym at Cal State LA. I ask all of the council members to stand with the majority of Democrats in this country who support a ceasefire, with the majority of Los Angeles citizens and residents, and with many city councils from Santa Monica to Pasadena to Alhambra to Downey. And your collective voice can reach farther than ours, and so we need you to do the right thing.
Speaker, your time has expired. We have to move on to the next speaker.
My name is Nina Menkes. I'm a short-term rental host in District Four. I'm here to request that the city stop torturing us. I pay and my fellow hosts pay vast amounts of tax to the city every month in the form of TOT tax, which is on top of the tax we already pay to state and federal governments. Plus, we pay an additional $1,000 a year for the right to share our homes, which we are doing not for fun, but in order to survive in a brutal economy. On top of all of that money, we're faced with a poorly functioning and often fully non-functioning system of registration renewals due to errors on the side of the city. When these errors cause a delay in the permit issuance to law-abiding complaint hosts, hosts who are paying thousands of dollars in tax, these errors cause catastrophic financial losses, and now they want to add a police permit, which will cost an additional 800 a year. Please get rid of it. It's atrocious.
Heather Carson, co-founder Hala. Mr. Krikorian, you've given no reason as to why you think police permits are needed for STRs or what exactly they will accomplish. It was clearly some sort of political move meant to appease, unite here. Why did you sneak an STR requirement into a hotel ordinance and at the last minute? It's a backdoor way of trying to amend the HSO, which you know is bad governance, and you're better than that. I trust the planning committee will recognize this. You tasked the police department with carrying this out, and their own investigative division said it would strain resources significantly, have limited effectiveness, be costly to the city, and largely duplicate the current task performed by planning. We ask the council to consider this when it comes back to you. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, council members. Thank you so much for all the work that you guys do. I see how hard you guys are working. My name's Molly. I'm a member of Democratic Socialists of America and an employee of the UC system and a Jew born and raised in LA. DSA is part of a grassroots coalition of more than 40 labor, interfaith, and community organizations calling upon the LA City Council to pass the ceasefire resolution introduced by council members Hernandez and Ramon. As a Jewish Angelino, I have joined the voices of many others in my Jewish community calling for a ceasefire in Gaza for months. We must join other cities who have passed resolutions demanding a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and urge our country to stop funding the Israeli military operations and join the rest of the world in addressing the human rights atrocities taking place in Palestine. Councilmembers, thank you, and I look forward to seeing your continued work on agendizing and passing the ceasefire resolution.
Hi, everyone. I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, Los Angeles. DSA is a part of a grassroots coalition of more than 40 labor, interfaith, and community organizations calling upon the LA City Council to pass a resolution in support of an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, the flow of humanitarian aid into the region, and release of all Israeli hostage and Palestinian detainees. It is not okay that my friends and I were brutally beaten at the UCLA encampment the night of the Zio attack on April 30th while the police let the beatdown happen. I was tear gassed, student skulls were bashed in, and the girls' fingers were shattered because of police negligence. If you guys pass a ceasefire resolution, nights like that will never happen again. I urge you to pass a ceasefire resolution immediately because students and the working class in LA will not stop or rest until Palestine is free. Students and the working class will continue to be brutalized in your districts until you guys pass a resolution that will end the genocide. Our safety is in your hands. We will not stop, we will not rest until Palestine is free. Please agendize this item. Thank you.
My son died in 1992. He was doing veteran school, his grades had come up, but you know they won't give me his report card? Why? Because I would go to the Los Angeles High School and talk to the teacher that I met at the last parent-teacher conference who told me, "I have not one complaint against your son." I'm like, "My son was the pop-up kid that always got up and walked around?" "No, he has not one complaint. My kid was doing that well." Okay? By the way, Stella Theodoulou, she was at 92 when I was there at CSUN, and I told her, "You're the most radical teacher around," and she looked positively green. Yeah, she did not like that. But by the way, she's missing, as many other people are missing right now. I don't see her picture up there. Six months ago, I sent her a letter, but she's not, her picture's not up there, so in my, it's possible she's missing.
Speaker, oh, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Helen Sklar. I would like to address a ceasefire resolution.
So you have one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you. I am a Jewish American. I am a retired attorney, and before that, I was a social worker. We understand that the ceasefire resolution that was introduced to the council has been referred to the Rules Committee. We would hope that Councilmember and President Krikorian will schedule a hearing so we may appear for public comment as soon as possible. The last several weeks in Gaza have been amongst the most deadly in the war to date. The last, or yesterday, I should say, it was announced that by the middle of July, if the hostilities do not cease, a million people in Gaza will face death by starvation. Right now, the devastation in Gaza is so complete, a fully accurate death toll is impossible.
Speaker, your time...
Cynthia Anderson Barker, a member of the National Lawyers Guild and Justice for Palestine and a coalition of 40 organizations that have been working diligently to get this city council to respond to our request for a ceasefire. So again, we're looking at Paul Krikorian, the chair of the Rules Committee, and we're asking you, please agendize this before you all go on your summer recess. We cannot wait any longer. I'm just gonna read a few words of a Palestinian who lives in Gaza. He's getting his PhD at Rhodes University, and there he is with his family. "I'm still in the north with my family. We are in a great famine. My injured son's health is deteriorating because of the famine. There's no milk, meat, vegetables, fruit, or anything to feed him. He lost most of his weight. Medicine is not here. It's gone from the market, all the markets, and my mother's diabetes medicine is gone." Are you gonna do something?
Speaker, your time has expired.
Or are we gonna keep protesting? Thank you.
Stop now the unrestrained cycles of violence, killing, and massive physical destruction before it's too late. A traumatized people are committing genocide and creating another traumatized people. We can't stop this because our local actions can help pressure Israel to stop the killing. Enough is enough. If we don't stop now, these massacres of innocent Palestinians will continue and can become a regional or even a world war. Thus, our actions now, through our actions now, we can begin to build a future with peace and justice for all peoples. We appeal to your humanity to save the lives of innocent Palestinian children, infants, and pregnant mothers who are daily being annihilated, obliterated, eradicated. Stop the unrestrained excessive bloodshed now. Jewish Israeli soldiers are also being killed, maimed, and traumatized for the rest of their lives, taking their experiences of killing fellow humans back home with them, and some will unconsciously act out their traumas on their own people. Is this what we want? Thank you very much.
I'm a member of the United Auto Workers, and I've been a constituent of LA City District 14 for over 16 years. I'm here to ask you to support for the ceasefire resolution, council file 240656, and to agendize it in committee. Over the past eight months, tens of thousands have taken to the streets of LA to demand an end to the genocide and occupation in Palestine. It is long overdue that the city of LA call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Amid massive budget cuts to LA Unified School District, working families are watching billions of dollars being allocated to arm Israel and to fuel the genocide. It's clear that this genocide is tied to the material conditions of our daily lives here in LA, and a ceasefire is a step towards investing in the people of our city. Councilmembers, our coalition looks forward to speaking with you about the importance of passing the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
And I'm here to thank Councilmember Hernandez, Ramon, and Soto Martinez for presenting this very important peace initiative that the President of the United States has also called for. And this is what it's all about, is to stop the killing. You've heard some of the statistics. What are you gonna tell your children? What are you gonna tell your grandchildren? What did you do? You didn't agendize this, President Krikorian? We need this agendized on your Rules Committee so that we can address this and get it back for a vote here. We passed a resolution in the city of Santa Monica. It is possible to do this. Funding has been cut. Councilmember Parks on the Venice Beach. We, money from Cultural Affairs is not coming down like it should be. I'd like to know what's happening on Venice Beach. I've talked to your deputy, but he's not calling me back. Is there a plan for retaking of the art on Venice?
Next speaker.
While the next speaker's coming up, I'm gonna...
For the past three months, I've been dealing with the opposite disability in City Clerk's office, and they've been wonderful towards me. I'm visually impaired. I've shown my credentials for that, so there's nothing where I'm trying to take advantage. I've asked for some of the agendas to be done in Braille, and it appears some of the council members and the staff here have been not bearing very respectful. So what I did, it's called the declaratory relief action, counselor, you could explain it to everybody, and also rid a mandate where I filed a claim of damages. I'm just basically gonna give 10 more days, and then you're going to have to provide stuff to me in Braille. I'm tired of begging. I'm tired of paying for it. I'm tired of them trying to ask council, certain council members, to do stuff, and they're just getting nothing. I can't blame them for trying, but trust me, I could be the biggest dickhead in the world when I get into court. I'm very good at discovery. Thank you, counselor.
Next speaker.
My name is Marion Gordon, and I want to talk about Resolution 240656.
We have one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Okay, please, think about this. The Israeli government has killed over 40,000 people already, mostly women and children, not soldiers. How in the world can we not ask for an immediate ceasefire? There is no excuse for such mass murder. I am a 79-year-old Jewish woman who was not raised as a Zionist. Many Jewish people have opposed Zionism since the ideology was developed. I was raised to see parallels between antisemitism and other struggles for liberation. What is happening to the Palestinians now is similar to what happened under apartheid in South Africa. Just as relevant, it is like the civil rights movement in the 60s, when Martin Luther King was called an agitator, an outside agitator, a communist, thrown in jail for civil disobedience. Today, activists and students, including...
Speaker, your time has expired.
Good morning. Ray Patel with the Northeast Los Angeles Hotel Owners Association. Thank you, Council President Krikorian, for sending Agenda Eight, the hotel police permit requirement, to the committee to get looked at, and look forward to working with those on the planning committee to share with you the ownerships of most of your hotels in Los Angeles are owned by small families that have dove their entire life savings into those hotels. To have the special interests weaponize our police department in a permitting process is unacceptable, and we look forward to sharing with you some of our past experiences when ordinances are weaponized by specific groups and special interest groups and their outcomes. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Cara Bartelt, and I'm general manager of the Hoxton Hotel. We've been a part of downtown in the hospitality industry for five years, and it's been a pleasure to be a part of it. I want to be here as a mother. I'm here with my daughter here today. We represent the families that make our hotels safe and our guests and our coworkers in this very tough environment. But tourism, as you know, is down in the city of Los Angeles, and the city council knows this because of the TOT is down considerably and has contributed to a large shortfall in the city's budget. But we are struggling. All of our team members are struggling in this industry. Our bookings are down, and the program, the police permit program, is very cumbersome, and it would be difficult to use in an already overburdened and struggling industry. So we will lose money in this process, and we ask you to help figure this out. We appreciate the time that we've been given. The city wants a good program, the one that will work to hold bad actors accountable. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
It should be noted that today, there are AIs working in banks as vice presidents. We need to know the names of the owners and how much percent of the AI do they own, 80%, 90%? And need their telephone numbers. We also need to know the telephone numbers of the programmers and how much percent, how often do they program the AI? And how much do they, how much of the money of the AI do they get? Many, some general public don't know the AIs are working and they're instead. It should be noted that also that AIs do excellent work. That should be noted. They do excellent work.
I am both a guest and a host with Airbnb. I'm limited to 120 nights a year, and because of my location and the size of my room, my profit is very, very small. The added burden of the $800 a year for a police permit would put my ability out of business. I think that if the police need to know that I have an Airbnb room, I have no problem with that. But burdensome regulation and more fees on top of the almost $200 a year now I have to pay for the right to be an Airbnb host to the state, to the city, is becoming excessive and will reduce the availability and also the opportunity for families to come and visit. Where I'm located, I'm about it for some people, and I'd hate to see that go away. Thank you.
Catherine McQueen, general comment. I'd like to urge you to agendize the ceasefire resolution. I'm in Tracy Parks District. Hi, Tracy. The war in Gaza has been using our tax dollars that we could use here to help with homeless and things like that. It's an environmental disaster. It threatens a wider war, which really would have bad repercussions on us, but of course also on everybody in the Middle East, but it would really hurt us too. We just heard from Ghostbusters and Starlight Foundation, and I would like you guys to think how many children a ceasefire resolution, an actual ceasefire would save. We're just killing children right now, children and women and other civilians. So I urge you to agendize this so that we can have public comment on it. Thank you.
Daily, I brought 24 bags of ice to Etna Street in Van Nuys for four years, every day. I studied daily who actually did the outreach needed and who didn't. I begged the other orgs to help me or help supply garbage bags for the trash I cleaned up daily. The DA you along with the other orgs coordinated wouldn't even acknowledge me the week you fenced up the entire street. Two weeks ago, I took a man who was wanting help in housing to help the mission, and both locations turned him away at 10:30 AM saying they were full. Until these multimillion-dollar orgs are held responsible for their lack of accountability of what they say they are doing, nothing's going to change. My guess is that actually, the people being housed is coming from the rehab system, which is $40,000 per head that they're receiving. Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Ramon, keep fighting, keep digging. Lhasa has failed, and only this council can hold them responsible. I know every name of the people I've met and lost to the streets. Do you? Goodbye and thank you.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
I'd like to speak on item on non-agenda public comment, please. You know, back in the day, when overdose awareness was providing me no awareness, I went to Hong Kong to meet up with Mr. Biden's son so we could smoke crack. And I told Joseph Biden, "Your son's a crack ass like you." And the president told me, "Go back to China."
This is not on any topic within the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles City Council. You have to get back on topic, or we'll move you to general public comment.
Item number seven, dealing with special recognition for overdose. So I, Chinese-American, know my rights. Stop interrupting the speaker. I'm on number seven. Ah, you see? Every time I come into this chamber, I am not protected by my language no more. Is that because I'm Chinese? I could be in...
You continue to be off-topic, Mr. Herman.
Okay, then let me go to number beautification. Beautification is not in Los Angeles, no, because we find out in CD5, Mr. Soto was placing a Confederate flag yesterday in front of the building. And I do not accept that. I want a Nazi flag for beautification.
So, Mr. Herman, this is your only warning. You are not on topic. This is about a beautification services project. So please stay on topic, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
No, I'm gonna read it into the public comment now.
You want to go to general public comment?
No, no. Item number six. Let me go into my English language now. Item number six is a motion for community beautification service. We hang flags, we hang banners in support of beautification, and you're telling me, my mind, that I'm fucked up not knowing what I'm talking about? Don't get into my darkness. Don't get into my drugs.
Go to general public comment.
Now, the monkey has spoken. Monkey Dawson, the nigger with attitude, prevents me in my First Amendment to talk about dumb, dumb Biden's drug addict son. He prevents me to speak like an Asian, Chinese, Korean-American, or whatever fucking Asian I am. But who cares? I'm an American citizen. And I cannot understand why you still bring in the Sergeant of Arms for the record, Sergeant Di Napolli LUGI, what is it, Lucigi? Why is he threatening disabled people? He threatened Dan Gus, who's a reporter. And that's the kind of racist, prejudiced, hypocrite motherfuckers you are, fucking with people with mental health, fucking with people who are disabled, and fucking with the non-disabled. Give us access. Give us our First Amendment on behalf of Trump. Fuck you!
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Mr. City Attorney, if you allow me, can you allow me to speak on everything? Thank you.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. I would like to speak with, start with number five. This is Mr. Harris Dawson talked about the Community Safety Partnership Program, and I continue to support this program because we have LAPD officer like Officer Duarte. Those are the best of the best LAPD officer, we're saving the kids and then from becoming a drug addict. I actually know in this Community Safety Partnership, there is numerous Officer Duarte. There were many, many dangerous kids. They're about to end up on the street. They were about to become a drug addict. They were about to become a murderer, killer, rapist. But it's because we have those LAPD Community Safety Partnership, because we have those amazing Officer Duarte, we save those kids. We solve those kids from end up in jail, end up in prison, end up being inside of the LAPD. So I support this Community Safety Partnership. I support Officer Duarte and all LAPD members. And then, number six, the beautification services in Council Five. First of all, I support this motion because CD5, we definitely need this community beautification. But at the same time, it's my concern that we have 14 or 15 districts. And now, as far as I know, the Olympic is coming. As far as I know, the Los Angeles will become a world center within three or four years. And my major concern is the beautification in the Kevin DeLeong CD14. I don't know how are we gonna deal with when the whole world are coming here for Olympic, and then we see downtown LA, 80,000 people leaving on the street, using the street sidewalk as a toilet, you know, pee, poop on the side of a toilet. So I don't know how we're gonna do that. We need this beautification, but not only CD5, every single city district, especially my district number one. And then, number seven. Number seven, it is about a drug overdose. So first of all, I support this motion because I know LAPD has a dedicated team regarding the drug, regarding the illegal drug and everything, all those. And then I know there are numerous Officer Duarte are working day and night, working 24/7, non-stop, were talking about, were trying to hunt down those illegal drug, illegal overdose. But the problem is, we are not arresting those people anymore. Before, LAPD used to arrest, prosecute, but right now, whenever you have an overdose, drug overdose, LAPD arrests them, they are out of jail the second day because of, they are being wasted because they are being released the second day. That's not gonna work.
General public comment.
And then, general public comment. I want to send my gratitude to Officer Duarte and to all the members of the LAPD. The reason why is, on the metro bus, on the metro bus, I actually encounter a hate crime. There's a passenger call me a three-inches shrimp. They call me three inches. Because of my three inches. I don't know what that means. But anyway, Officer Duarte, what I know is LAPD are trying to protect all the Los Angelinos, regardless you are one... regardless you are one inches or you are three inches. I know Officer Duarte has a twenty-four inches baton, so Officer...
This is not on the, this is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, so I need you to bring it back to something that's within the subject matter jurisdictions of this city.
Yeah, bring it back. So all of the LAPD officers are trying, is their job is to protect every single Angelino, every single person in city of L.A., regardless I'm a three inches or not. I support Officer Duarte, and I support LAPD twenty-four inches. Thank you, Officer...
Speaker, your time has expired. Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Yes, thank you, thank you, DEI hire. Pumpkin head. Ow! Get them right. They all look alike. Number four. Let's see here. The cultural affairs expenditures, what districts are going in? I'd ask Tracy, but she's busy talking to her friends. So I will deny number four then. Pay attention next time. Unisys is paying attention, so we'll clear all her items. And then number nine, the indicted Juan Kern Price. Oh, oh, boy. Yes, that's right. Going to court at South Park? South Park's the name of a famous cartoon that predicts the future. Sixty thousand dollars from the police fund to go to what? Safety partnership program. So in other words, Kern Price is secretly defunding the police. Make a note of that, John Lee. Tell your FBI contacts that he's trying to take away money from law enforcement. Sheen on you, Kern Price. Why would you do that? Because when he gets sentenced, he's going to use that to reduce the sentence. Oh, then he's smarter than he looks. I support it then. Then number six, beautification for the famous horseface herself, Tru Yaroslavsky. Then how come she gets money for Conservation Corps, but poor Amelda has to take money out of her office holder account just to cut some weeds over there in the Sepulveda Basin? Why are you treating the Jews better than the Latinas? Is that your way there, new Mr. President? I thought you were going to be equitable. But instead, another bald head, another day, right? And then number seven, overdose awareness day. Today, we dedicate this meeting to Hunter Biden. Yes, as you know, and definitely Unisys can testify to this, over on Rampart and Seventh, Rampart Eighth, in the alleys over there on Eighth and Alvarado, Unisys has a whole bunch of crack addicts in the alleys. She could go in there with her office holder accounts money and clear them all out, but she keeps the dealers in business. And again, we will teach you, if you want to know, how to make a crack pipe. First, you put the dope in the bottom and heat it up at one hundred seventy degrees. Then you put the affluent in, then the butane and light it up and smoke and have fun. All right, now we get to the general comment. So you'll be going on your vacation soon, so let's remember a few things. Number one, if somebody gives you council criminals a bag of money, know that there's a nearby camera operated by an FBI agent, so I would put that down as a big no this time around. Secondly, let's talk about the famous flower, the white flower. Can we get, please, can we get you to retire that ugly flower over there at CD7? It's just horrible.
We've warned you multiple times. You need to speak to things that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of this council.
You bring my time back, dumb dumb. You took my time when you interrupted me with that large fat head and those big fingers. So remember, the state bar is looking into your bar card, and they're looking into DEI's bar card, because Daniel Gus will fuck you and put you in a tent when he's done.
Item five. This is so-called motion for a Community Safety Partnership Program being brought to us by indicted criminal Kern Price and sleazy Marquees Dawson for lining their corrupt pockets of yet another sixty thousand dollars from this motion that should go to the people of Los Angeles. The city clerk is supposed to be instructed to execute document to direct the payment of this sixty thousand dollars to Art Active Incorporated. But these funds will end up in the bank accounts of indicted embezzlement polygamists, criminals, Kern Price and sleazy Marquees Dawson. For this reason, I demand a no vote on this item. Item seven should receive a no vote, in my opinion, as indicted criminal Kern Price and unelected Heather Hutt are allowed to vote. The Los Angeles Sleazy Council is the most corrupt local government in the country, everybody, and even though this item is for only four hundred dollars, we, the people, object to indicted criminals and unelected Uncle Tom's Hut voting on matters concerning our public funds. Overdose Awareness Day, sleazy hall illumination does nothing to reduce the homeless generated by petty pink-faced Krikorian and Dawson. I demand a no vote. I'm going to public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Dirty pink-faced corrupt Armenian dictator, Paul Klukluk Krikorian, has indicted Alan Bale embezzling criminal Kern Price, putting daily on this corrupt Sleazy Council. Public black faces occupy twenty percent of the Sleazy Council, yet black women are only four point three percent of the population, but twenty-two percent of female rape, thirty-six percent of female assault, thirty-three percent of female homicide, thirty-three percent of all female violence, nearly fifty percent of the homeless, fifty percent of the incarcerated, fifty percent of the unemployed. And the black community has zero representation from this incompetent, corrupt, sellout, self-serving indicted black Uncle Tom members of the corrupt city council. I demand all their resignations. Something needs to change, folks. Thank you. And for general public comment, I'd like to say to have...
Go ahead.
Turtle Island, we have been suffering for five hundred-plus years as indigenous people of genocide, so we recognize our indigenous Palestinian relatives, and the L.A. City should celebrate the Indigenous Peoples' Day, but we demand and write and figure out how to agendize this, to have a cease-permanent fire, because we need to keep in right relations with all of our indigenous relations, all our indigenous people all around the world. So please, do the right thing and agendize this. Free Palestine now.
General comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Kaia, and I'm a member of DSA L.A., and I'm a constituent of Katie Yaroslavsky. Hi, Katie. All right, DSA is part of a grassroots coalition of more than forty groups, and that group is growing. Los Angeles must support an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, the flow of humanitarian aid into Gaza, and the release of Israeli hostages and Palestinian hostages as well. The call for ceasefire is deeply and widely felt in L.A. The L.A. Federation of Labor, which represents over eight hundred thousand working families, put out a statement in support of a ceasefire in March. Students across all major L.A. universities have taken action and made their voices heard in protest of the genocide happening in Gaza. And today, workers at UCLA have gone on strike because of unfair practices used to silence the voices of those who want to see an end to the violence in Gaza. Please agendize this immediately. I'm just from like a personal note. I've never seen, heard so many awful images and videos and stories. I just wanted to share one of the stories that...
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
Okay, I want you to go in CD thirteen to know that the malicious prosecution and the priest that maliciously prosecuted me were crimes that never happened, and I was found not guilty. He's in your district now. He's in Elysian Valley at Saint Anne's Catholic Church, priest Albert Pragasam, and his line church, which is connected to Divine Savior in CD one, but he's now in CD thirteen in Elysian Valley at Saint Anne. I want you to be aware of this so that you know, and have no contact with this church whatsoever, and so you know what kind of church that this is. They're cruel, they're mean, they're heartless, they put me through a trial for no goddamn good reason, other than just to try to stick it to me and screw me up. You know, they lost. It's really cruel what they did, because it was all a big fat lie, and this priest...
Caller, your time has expired.